In compliance with Governor Newsom's executive order N 2920, in response to the ongoing COVID-19 outbreak, the district will conduct the Board of Education's meeting as a teleconference. Given the health risk associated with COVID-19, the Newport-Macy Unified School District has decided not to open the boardroom to the public. Spanish interpretation will be available via the Zoom link. Roll call, Rosie?
Trustee Yelsey?
Here.
Trustee Barto?
Here.
Trustee Metoyer?
Here.
Trustee Anderson?
Here.
Trustee Crane?
Here.
Trustee Wagen?
Here.
Trustee Ersoilu?
Here.
Mr. Lee Sung?
Here.
Community input on closed session agenda items. Trustee Metoyer, would you read the statement?
This is an opportunity for the public to address the board regarding items on the closed session agenda via electronically submitted comments. Each speaker has three minutes of comment reading time, and per Board bylaws 9323, there is a maximum of 20 minutes of comments per topic. Board consent, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public comments, depending on the topic and the number of persons submitting comments. All comments are recorded in full on the meeting video record.
Okay, we've received 73 comments for our meeting today. For closed session, we have nine comments. We also have, on community input on non-agenda items, 58 comments. Some of those are related to items we may be talking about in closed session, but because people put them in as community input on non-agendized items, we'll leave them there and read them at that time. So we will begin with the closed session items, and we have nine comments. Trustee Anderson?
Yes, the first comment is from Catherine Anderson. Please open the district pools now. Swimming and other aquatic activities are safe, as per the CDC, and critical for the physical, mental, and emotional health of our students. There are no staffing issues regarding the pools, and the protocols in place all fall works beautifully. Open the pools immediately to prevent more harm to our kids. Thank you.
My comment is from Stephanie Harrington. It is important for the students to continue practicing with their teams for both mental and physical well-being. The students, school, coaches have all taken the required steps to mitigate COVID's spread through temp checks, students calling out when not feeling well with no repercussions from coach, wearing masks, and practicing social distancing in the water and on land. Remote learning all day and no practice with the team is creating anxiety and depression in so many of our students.
My comment is from Masha Swart. The NMUSD has closed the campuses and pools through January 25th. This appears to be due to staffing issues due to COVID. The coaches of Newport Beach Water Polo are the ones who open, maintain, and close the pool facility during our use of it, therefore having no impact on the district's staffing issues. Furthermore, NBWP has been following and will continue to follow an approved COVID-19 safety protocol. It is in the best interest of our athletes to continue their training for the physical, mental, and social benefits. The students' use of the pool should be reinstated as soon as possible.
And this is from Maurice Menda. NMUSD closed all secondary campuses with the new spike, including all athletic facilities due to staffing concerns. We are members of NBS, the swim team that uses the pool after school. The pool is open and closed by the swim polo coaches, not school staff. It causes an unnecessary interruption in training for athletes that prepare to compete in regional and national competitions. It hurts the program because we stop paying for the program when the program stops, but the program staff still eats during that time and pays other bills. The pool should remain open as long as protocols are followed. I support a closure when there is evidence of increased risk to students. There are no alternate pool facilities to maintain training for these student athletes.
Jamie McLellan states, "I am writing to provide my input on the opening of district pools. My kids both swim, and I as well swim on the masters team. Since the pools have been closed, we have had limited to no opportunities to continue with training. Taking away access to the pools is not benefiting the children, students, or the community. Please open the pools."
My comment is from Kelly Cabal. Please reopen the high school pools as soon as possible, even if high schools don't reopen to students on January 25th. I am a parent of a student member of CMAC Coast Mesa Aquatics Club, and having the high school pools open is critical to giving our kids exercise in their mental health. Their year has been disrupted so much already, at least with an activity they love that helps their physical and mental health. They are allowed to keep some sense of enjoyment and normalcy. CMAC has been incredible with keeping their policies of mask-wearing, temperature checks, and social distancing.
My comment is from Stacy Euler. "The NMUSD has closed the campuses and pools through January 25th, not out of concern that the students and staff are contracting COVID on campus, but due to staffing issues due to COVID. The coaches of Newport Beach Swimming Water Polo are the ones who open, maintain, and close the pool facility during our use of it, therefore having no impact on the district's staffing issues. Furthermore, MPWP, NBS have been following and will continue to follow an approved COVID-19 safety protocol. Open the pools."
The next comment is from Kimberly Rickerson. "Please allow the kids to exercise and practice in the CMAC pools. It helps their mental health and their bodies. Please consider the chlorine kills germs and outdoor always helps, just like parks and recreation. Thank you."
My comment is from Tammy L. Catathon. "The district being open during the worst numbers in the pandemic seems like a liability. I work as a health assistant for NMUSD. I am seeing firsthand what it is taking to follow protocols for safety during the pandemic. I will say that I think my coworkers are, for the most part, being just as cautious as I am. The issue I have with being open has been the same since day one. Parents are not all compliant with the protocols for students being on campus. First of all, students are not physically screened. No temperatures are being taken for students, as it was decided to be a hinder to educational learning, but so is getting sick with COVID and closing down classrooms. Large walk-through thermometers are made for the exact purpose of screening everyone who enters a facility. Parents are not doing their due diligence of screening students at home. Currently, at my location, we have a class closed. The principal and the nurse are both out and will be until the 15th through 19th, as expected return dates. Today, my backup nurse had no health assistance. I truly think the systems are not going to hold up for much longer at this rate. The stress is going to cause the rest of to run down and require time off soon. I know that today there was no coverage. I used to love my job. I refer to it as a ray of sunshine in my life. I loved helping kiddos who did not feel well, had a boo-boo, or were my regulars to take medication. This year, I spend 75% of my day on the phone talking with parents about their kids' absence. I have had parents lie to me today about why their student was home. It is just a stomach ache. I ask, have you been exposed to anyone with COVID? Well, actually, yes, and we are waiting for test results. I have families calling to tell me that they're friends with X, Y, and Z, and X has COVID, they told me. When I called the family to verify the absence, I have literally been told that they do not want to tell me if they've been exposed or might have been exposed. I had a family today say they did not want to give me their test results. They would prefer to quarantine for 14 days. With privacy laws, HIPAA and FERPA are not helping keep the public safe. I am a parent in the district. I understand the policy can be tedious. It is a privilege to be on campus right now. Health and safety need to be prioritized for everyone, including staff. There is nothing safe about how parents are sending kids to school. I have teachers reporting kids are telling them they just took cough medicine to come to school. I sent a boy home today who told me his dad said, "Do not go to the health office today." Parents are not supporting us. I do not have my nurse or principal to back me up. Something needs to happen before someone dies."
Okay, that's the end of our public comments for closed session. But again, I want to reiterate that we have, all the board members have received all the comments. Earlier today, we've read them all, so we will take into consideration anything that will be presented later when we are in closed session. So thank you very much. We will be moving out of closed session. The items are 4A, conference with legal counsel, one case; 4B, threat to public services or facility; 4C, conference with legal counsel, two cases; 4D, conference with labor negotiator NMUSD representative; 4E, public employee discipline, dismissal, release, employment; and 4F, student discipline, one case. So all board members will now log out in the closed session, and we will return at 6 o'clock to our open session. Thank you. If it is down. Good evening, everyone. In compliance with Governor Newsom's executive order N 2920, in response to the ongoing COVID-19 outbreak, the district will conduct the Board of Education's meeting as a teleconference. Given the health risk associated with COVID-19, the Newport-Macy Unified School District has decided for room to the public. Spanish interpretation will be available via the Zoom link. And before I get to opening ceremonies, I just wanted to thank our own Bob Cuba, who is our AV technician, who has created the atmosphere that we are now in. We no longer are wearing our headsets, but we do have people on Zoom on a big screen, and we have a total view of the boardroom. So Bob, on behalf of the entire board, thank you very much. We'll now have our opening ceremonies, moment of reflection, and pledge to the flag. And Trustee Crane, would you like to lead us in the pledge to the flag? Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adoption of the agenda, and we have two public comments on that, so we will read those before we make a motion to approve the agenda. Trustee Crane?
This is from Wendy Lees. "As a member of the public, I respectfully request the board vote to move Agenda Item 17, 'Community Input on Non-Agenda Items', to the beginning of the meeting. I hold dear my First Amendment right to speak to this tax-supported school district. With COVID and not being present to speak directly to the board, a hardship is created. You cannot hear the passion in my words, and I cannot look at you. By putting the comments at the end of the meeting, you are disenfranchising the public. Of course, you have important business, and a meeting may last a long time. Been there, done that. But listening to your constituents is an important part of your job. Waiting to the end of the meeting to find out if my comment was read and addressed by the board creates an unnecessary hardship. Besides, the meetings should allow for us to call in with live comments in the first place. I ask the new board vote to allow live comments as well."
This comment is from a concerned elementary staff member. "As stated in the board meeting agenda for tonight, in compliance with Governor Newsom's executive order N 2920 and in response to the ongoing COVID-19 outbreak, the district will conduct the Board of Education's meeting as a teleconference. Given the health risks associated with COVID-19, the Newport-Macy Unified School District has decided not to open up the boardroom to the public. If more than approximately seven adults should not meet in the boardroom, which is about three times the size of a classroom, then it is not safe for elementary certified and classified staff or students to be in classrooms in the hybrid model. Comparatively, elementary classrooms are occupied by 15 students and one or two adults in the morning, and a different group of 15 students in the afternoon. Why is it only safe for elementary staff and students? As stated on the OC Health COVID Board, between August 2020 and January 1st, there was 949 COVID-positive tests among elementary and middle school students, whereas there were 429 COVID-positive tests among secondary students. Slow the spread and keep the healthcare system from the brink of collapse. Return elementary to distance learning for the duration of the surge."
Ersoilu? Before I ask for an adoption of the agenda, I just wanted to go over the public comments. Today, we had 73 public comments. We had nine before we went into closed session, which we read. Adoption of the agenda, we had two comments, and then we have one on our wellness video, three on the consent calendar, and 58 on community input on non-agendized items. Some of the comments, first of all, all of the board members received all of these comments. Earlier today, we have all read all of the comments, and some of the comments have content that had to do with items in closed session, but because they were labeled as for community input on non-agenda items, we left them where the person writing and submitted it. So we hopefully will get through most of those. So is there a motion to approve the agenda, adoption of the agenda?
I move to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Trustee Barto moved. Trustee Metoyer seconded. Roll call vote?
Trustee Yelsey?
Yes.
Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Trustee Metoyer?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Wagen?
Yes.
Trustee Ersoilu?
Yes.
Adoption of the minutes from 12:1520 and 12:1720. Is there a motion?
I move to adopt the minutes from 12:1520 and 12:1720.
Second.
Move by Trustee Barto, second debate, Trustee Crane. Roll call vote?
Trustee Yelsey?
Yes.
Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Trustee Metoyer?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Wagen?
Yes.
Yes?
Trustee Ersoilu?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item number 10, student board member reports. The topic given tonight to the student board members was to report on their experiences attending the CSBA conference. This was in December, and we did not have any time in December to talk about this, but this was their first experience. So we'd like to hear from them, what they learned, their impressions, and if they felt it was useful.
And also to amend that, we asked them as well about their experience with finals prior to the end of the semester they had time to ask.
Okay. All right, so we'll start with Brittany Ibergini.
Hello? So talking about my CSBA experience, I really liked it because it brought forth a lot of new ideas and engaging conversations, something that I was particularly interested in, the student perspective and hearing how other students were running their student board members and how they were putting in those new ideas and those new thoughts. So I got to meet students like Micah, who were just as like-minded and who really fought for change in their district, which I really enjoyed. Something that I wanted to talk about from the CSBA meeting was how I learned to better represent the student population from my school. They gave me a lot of tips and tricks and websites to look at to really look at the student demographics, which I really appreciated because that's something that we could always improve on. In terms of the break, to everyone I talked to, they really enjoyed having finals before the break because they felt that it was a lot less stressful, you know, taking that time for the finals to really focus in on that thing, to really focus in on their families and take the time to just rest. Thank you.
Maddie McNamara?
Hi. So for the CSBA meeting, I was, it was a while ago, but there were some things that did stand out to me. One of those things that stood out to me was the impact that we bring as student board members for not only our school, but for our district. I realize our job as board members is pretty important because it doesn't just help our district, but it also helps our students get their thoughts out. I've always felt like students felt more inclined to talk to other students because we are all going through the same thing. So being a student board member is pretty important because we can actually get how students are feeling unlike some of the adults. I also learned that student board members can make an impact and help make a change to our district and the schools. This isn't just about our input and how we feel about our school, but this is about how the students feel about our school. We are just relaying the messages and making sure that our students are heard. I also learned that I need to start asking a lot more questions because that will ultimately benefit me and my school on being a better student board member. Ultimately, the CSBA helped me get a better understanding of what it really means to be a student board member. Thank you.
Thank you, Maddie. Elizabeth Levy?
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Levy from Cloud Campus. Tonight, I'll discuss the CSBA conference and the results of the survey regarding final exams and the conclusion of the first semester prior to winter break. First, the CSBA conference was helpful. It gave me insight on how to best represent my campus. I enjoyed the small breakout rooms where we discussed concerns about our school. We discussed mental health, and after the conference, I discussed the topic with my ASV team, and since then, we have been collaborating with our counselors to create events about mental health. Regarding the survey, I received 120 responses from secondary students. 89% of the students ranked the new schedule three or above on a scale from 1 to 5 of the satisfaction scale. Here are a few comments that I feel that summarize most students' responses. A seventh grader stated, "Before break, because usually I forget information during break. It's less stressful as I don't have to think about studying during break." An 11th grader stated, "Knowing the material earlier will help those taking AP exams." Another 11th grader stated, "Completing finals after just learning the material made it easier to remember." Another 11th grader stated, "It felt really rushed, and we did not have enough time to prepare." Yet another 11th grader stated a very interesting point about how an assignment or project could easily test the students on their understanding, and a final only encourages stress and short-term memorization of information, which was a very interesting point of view because we only had a couple students that said that. So overall, the students at Cloud Campus liked the new schedule, while I felt a few felt rushed. Thank you so much.
Elizabeth. Troy Saboda?
Hello, I'm Troy. I'm here to represent CDM. So with regards to finals, I mean, I'm not gonna, I don't want to repeat what everybody else said, but definitely think if we are in hybrid toward the end of the second semester, I think, sorry, I think that there's like a lot of feedback. Okay. I think having a more streamlined process just for like all the teachers and having a unified way that all the teachers are on board with the same thing for finals, I think it got a little hard with all the teachers doing different things for finals week with the hybrid setting. So with CSBA conference, I thought is pretty insightful. In addition to the student board member session, I also went to the session on climate change and ways that the district can help address that. And there's actually a lot of cool things, and I don't want to go too much into depth, but some districts have passed board resolutions on curbing some emissions and also converting our district to more electric vehicles and stuff. And I know we've done a lot with solar already, but we can definitely go further, and a lot of that will end up saving us money in the long run. So I think it's something we should be seriously pursuing. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Troy. Luca Gorgorish-Billy?
Could you hear me? Okay. Hello, President Yelsey, Superintendent Lee Sung, and board trustees. Concerning the CSBA conference that we had in December, I think there are a few takeaways that me and the other student board members obviously took from it. I, for one, learned a few possible solutions to some student concerns. One solution that stood out the most to me was starting a sort of college club at schools, at all of our schools, actually. So the lack of sufficient timely college consulting to students is an issue at many schools throughout the nation. And by discussing with student board members from other states, I was exposed to the idea of starting a college club as an extracurricular that students all over the school can participate in, regardless of their grade level. I shared this idea with my school's principal, and hopefully can get somewhere with it as I believe such a club would have a great benefit for the students and possibly reduce stress on counselors during the senior year. And as for the regular school report for Coast to Mesa High School, I conducted a short survey and received a few positive results regarding the first week of school after winter break. Everyone seems to be liking it so far as there aren't finals that they have to worry about, and everyone was able to rest over break without having to study much and catching up on sleep. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Luca. Paulina Vazquez?
Hello, everyone. If I glitch out, I'm really sorry. My internet connection just got switched, so it's a little iffy. Because the UCHS has always had finals before break, I will only be speaking briefly on something I learned about from other student board members during the CSBA event. To equity in Riverside Unified School District, student board members enacted something called the Student Voice Series. In these series, Riverside students have the opportunity to share stories about their backgrounds and any issues they've had at school revolving around race, gender, socioeconomic status, sexuality, mental health, or disabilities. It is a way to instill the feeling of understanding among students and staff. The Student Voice Series also paves the way for more representation in the school district, which calls for a need for equity district-wide. I believe this impacted me a lot because right now, there have been a lot of issues throughout the years. You saw, see, I'm sorry, as you saw during the Black Lives Matter, I'm so sorry, the Black Lives Matter protests, and even now with the Capitol, storming of the Capitol. And so it's very important to address these issues and instill more equity and begin with equity in the school districts. Thank you.
Thank you, Paulina. Bailey Bogard?
Hello, I am Bailey Bogard, representing Newport Harbor High School. So in regards to ending finals before break, I personally really enjoyed that, and I'm glad that it is able to continue this year and throughout the next years. And then regarding the conference that we had and the leadership summit, it was honestly refreshing to hear back from a lot of different kids from all over California and how they represent their schools, their districts, and sometimes even their counties. I learned one main, or I can take one main takeaway from that conference, and that would be to look back on our motivations as school board reps. Our motivation is to better represent our students, and we do it in order to make change within our district. And so that was a big takeaway for me is how can I do my job better? And then looking back on why I initially started in the first place. So, thank you.
And as always, we want to thank all the board members for their diligent work in keeping us informed and really taking their positions seriously. Item 11, Harbor Council. Do we have Lisa Bowler here?
I'm here. Can you hear me? Good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year, Superintendent Lee Sung, board members, cabinet, and guests. Last week, we had our first PTA meeting of the new year, and we had a presentation from John Drake and Kurt Bauermeister on the health and safety component of the law regarding sex ed. They informed us that no elementary students would be participating. At the junior high, middle school level, there will be 10 one-hour classes, and at the high school level, there'd be a one-semester class regarding this. Parents are able to view the material and have the option to opt their child out of the class if needed. And Kurt was very informative, John also, in describing what was going to be going on, and he said that they were more than happy to speak to any parents who had issues with this, and it was going to be basically facts and not a lot of other stuff that people worry about. And then Superintendent Lee Sung gave us a COVID-19 update and explained the reasons behind the extended distance learning at the secondary level. And so that put parents' minds at ease also. And then at the PTA level, we are working with our units to get them all working on their mid-year audits, which are the time period from July 1st through their mid-year audits, which are the time period from July 1st through December 31st. And also this month, our workman's compensation reports are due to our insurance company. And this year, it's being done differently. Everything PTA-wise always goes through channels, the school, to the council, to the district, onto state, and then onto national. And this year, with our new insurance company, they have put the whole thing online, and our units are able to just go online, fill in the blanks, and submit their workman's comp. If they owe any money, it'll tell them exactly how much they owe, and they'll pay it directly to the insurance company, which is really a time saver for us. And we're working now with the new system on making sure that all of our schools are getting it done. So that's my report for now. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Lisa. And now I'd like to ask our association federation presidents to make a brief comment to highlight their activities. I see Tamara, so we'll start with you tonight.
Hey. Good evening, Board Trustees, honored guests. Our teachers have been working harder than ever before, between teaching in person, shifting from one tier to the other, writing engagement logs and recreating curriculum. Our teachers have gone over and beyond their duty to do their work for our students. They do this knowing that there is no guaranteed protections for them at the school site. They do this knowing that some school board members and community members dismiss their stories on social media. However, these are the stories, and this is the reality that is going on. A teacher who already had a close call with positive cases in her classroom discovered on social media that there was an unmasked party with several students at the school site. At the party, there were kids who were known to have been previously exposed to COVID in attendance. That teacher not only had anxiety working in the classroom afterwards, wondering if they would bring home COVID to their family, but felt devalued when there was no follow-up or guidance for reporting an issue which could affect their life or their students' lives. Another story is the amount of SDC classrooms that have been left without proper support. Teachers are not notified of instructional aids in quarantine and are left on their own. Sometimes they are subs, sometimes coworkers and principals are recruited last minute to help them with the groups of students who are medically fragile and without masks. Not only does this place us in a situation of noncompliance for federal obligations, but it puts our children at risk. Teachers face, teachers face feelings of uncertainty about how and if they will get through the day safely. Examples like these used to occur once a week or once every two weeks. Now they are happening on a daily basis. School board trustees, I urge you to look more carefully at the local infection rate data and go further lengths to protect these employees who have been dedicating their lives on behalf of their children. Since November 30th, Costa Mesa had a 143% increase in cases from 2,658 cases to 6,453 cases as of today. Newport Beach had an 82% increase from 1188 to 2714 cases on those same dates. Not only are our ICUs full, but the ages in ICU are increasing with younger patients. I am asking you explicitly to please seek and inquire about what is going on at all of our school sites. We want to teach in an environment that is safe. We want to teach knowing that our families are protected. We want to teach without fear. We don't want our students to sacrifice themselves attending school and jeopardize their family's livelihood if they bring an infection home. We want to teach knowing that we can complete IEP goals without infection. We need to work remotely until we get past this surge so we can focus on teaching and not have to work and not have to worry about the possibility and not even receiving the needed medical care in the dwindling hospital capacity. We want our employer and you to be more responsive and proactive in this current surge. We need you to listen to our stories and make the decision for us to work remotely on behalf of the families who need us the most. Thank you.
Pam Saunders, CSEA.
Good evening, President Yelsey, Superintendent Li Sung, Cabinet, and guests. Thank you for this opportunity from CSEA. First and foremost, we'd like to thank all our classified employees throughout our district. We are very grateful to every classified employee for doing their part and all their hard work. We are still very concerned about the safety of our students and staff at schools and worksite as the number of cases continues to rise. It is more important than ever that we also transition our elementary schools to distant learning for everyone's safety. The significant increases continue to impact our district workforce. This means there is less staff available to perform the essential duties. This creates an unsafe environment for students as the remaining staff is overworked, stressed, and scared. We are happy to report that we are now meeting with Leona Olson every week to discuss our concerns for safety of our staff. We appreciate her time and the improvement in our communication with the district. Unfortunately, the summer assistant program application window has now closed for the school year. We are hopeful that the district will apply next year. Vaccines are beginning to be distributed, and there is a light at the end of the tunnel. We'd like to remind everyone to wear a mask and social distance during the holiday weekend. As COVID numbers continue to rise, your actions impact everyone around you. Again, thank you again for this opportunity. CSEA Chapter 18.
Thank you, Pam. And next, we have a report on NMUSD Wellness, a video which we are excited about seeing. None of us have seen it, but we also have one public comment on that. So Trustee Matoye, would you like to read that?
Sure. This is from concerned elementary teachers. As per the agenda, the following item will be discussed. This video highlights Newport Mesa Unified School District's commitment to the mental health and wellness of students. District staff share about positive behavior interventions and support, restorative practices, community alliance collaborative, mental health task force, and the parent education series. Let's discuss mental health. Until you come to our classrooms, talk to students and employees about our feelings about being in live teaching, you do not understand our mental health. Until you listen to the grim daily COVID-19 updates, knowing you will be leaving your home to go to a classroom of students from mixed households, you do not understand our mental health. Until you walk into our classrooms and look at the brave faces we are forced to wear, you do not understand our mental health. Until a 10-year-old looks at you with tears in their eyes, asking, "Why is my sister safe at home in distance learning and I'm not?" You do not understand our mental health. Until your own family is scared for you to leave for work for fear you will contract COVID-19 and not receive a bed at the hospital, you do not know the colossal levels of fear and anxiety we teachers feel on a daily basis. Please take time to consider how to support the mental health of teachers and staff so we are better able to support our students. If you talked to adult elementary teachers and saw the sacrifices we have to make to work these two weeks following winter break, then perhaps you might begin to understand. Staff members are not seeing their families or their children. We are staying isolated because we know we will be exposed to COVID-19 during these two weeks following the break. We do not want to infect our loved ones. Please realize a very small percentage of parents are reporting positive COVID-19 cases, and that is if they test at all. Understand that we are vigilant that students wear masks and socially distance at school, but we can only control what happens at school. We hear stories of students who meet for maskless playdates after school, that they are going on vacations out of state and even out of the country. Understand the amount of unnecessary fear and anxiety you have placed on the school community. Listen to the scientists and return elementary classes to distance learning during the peak of post-holiday COVID-19 spread. There is no mental health support for elementary teachers, staff, or students. Let's do our part to slow the spread.
Thank you. And now I will turn it over to Sarah Jacom.
Hi, good evening, President Yelsey, Vice President Barto, Trustees, Superintendent Li Sung, and members of the community. We're very excited to present this video that was created to highlight some of the programs and services we offer within the district related to social, emotional learning, and mental health for students. And this is not an exclusive or exhaustive list, and, but it does give you a little bit of a flavor of what the different programs we have going in the district. I will say this video was, the idea behind it came from Annette Franco, the Public Information Office, and Adriana Angulo had a huge part in getting this done. This was also pre-COVID, and a lot of the footage of students in there is all pre-COVID. So it's actually a little bit jarring to see it because you're like, they're so close and we're not on masks on. But we are excited to share this with the board and then with the community at large just to demonstrate our efforts to try and address all of the mental health needs of our students.
The academic performance of students is a high priority for any school district, including Newport Mesa. But we've come to realize, unfortunately, that there are other challenges that students face, not just in the classroom but outside of the classroom as well. Bullying, drugs, depression, anxiety, uncertainty about their home living situation, challenges between parents, custody issues, divorce, all of these things play into challenges that keep students from being the most successful that they can be. I'm really proud to be working in the Newport Mesa Unified School District because in the Office of Student Services, we're very much committed to helping support students and families with those issues.
A key program in all of our schools is PBIS, which stands for Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports. PBIS matters because we're really focusing on what students are doing well and focusing on their positive behavior and acknowledging that and rewarding that. One of the examples would be providing an incentive for that positive behavior, and we also have things such as the Buddy System at a variety of our elementary schools across the district. Our focus here is that we want to acknowledge kindness, we want to acknowledge the positive things that students are doing, and really highlight that in their everyday activities. The district also uses restorative practices. Restorative practices really work to build those relationships and connections amongst our students and our staff, but also with our entire community. We use things such as community building circles within our classrooms, our morning meetings, but then we also have visual reminders around the campus that emphasize kindness and really help students feel connected to each of their schools.
In Newport Mesa, we're so fortunate to be located amongst some amazing resources. We've developed our community alliance collaborative to really facilitate and develop those resources so that we're aware of everything that they have to offer, from housing to nutrition to enrichment activities after school. We've been able to partner with our community agencies to really wrap around and cultivate and support the whole child. Something that's critical to the success of our support to students is simply to listen. We've developed our mental health task force to have time to listen to our students and our families and our mental health providers. When we connect with them and truly listen, we're able to respond with meaningful and essential supports.
Here in Newport Mesa, we really value the relationships that we have with our parents. We're excited about our partnership with our Harbor Council PTA as well as other parent organizations in the district. We continue to provide our parent education series where we give parents valuable suggestions, tips, and strategies on how to work with their students at home.
It's easy to feel like the challenges that students and families face today is daunting for any educational professional. But I'm proud of the fact that in the Newport Mesa Unified School District, we do have programming and personnel that are committed to taking on those challenges head-on. We're deeply committed to supporting every student and family with agency partners, school partners, site administrators, and most of all, parents and families. And I believe that together, we will be successful.
All of us at Newport Mesa Unified School District are here to support you. For resources and support, reach out to a teacher, principal, counselor, or other caring staff at your school. For more information about our mental health and wellness programs, call us or visit our
Thank you very much, and thank you to Annette and Adriana and everybody else involved. And it is odd, odd to watch this, to see normalcy going on in our communities. It hasn't happened in 10 months, and it gives me hope that sometime soon we can go back to that. So thank you so much. And I know since this was done, we've added a lot more in our mental health arena, which we'll be getting to it at some point. So thank you very much. Next, we'll have Superintendent Report.
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Are we going to subtitle or put a Spanish translation for this? I mean, it would be hard to mouth it and it'd be dubbed, and it would look really funny, but I just wondered if we had a, the potential to subtitle.
We have Annette on Zoom. Should we go to her?
Go ahead, Annette. You can answer that.
Hi, yes, good evening, President Matoye, sorry, President Yelsey, members of the board, Superintendent Li Sung, and guests. We are going to add captions to the video in Spanish and English for ADA compliance, and we're also going to translate the video posted on YouTube, and then we're going to send out a communication to all of our families informing them that the video is available.
Thank you, Annette. Next, we will go on to Superintendent Report.
All right, good evening, everybody. I think it's safe to say Happy New Year, even though we're January 12th. This is our first meeting of the new year, and boy, do we need a new year. We needed a new year. So I wish everybody a very Happy New Year. I am pleased to hear from some of our student board members that they actually got some sleep and some rest, and I really do hope that everybody had a chance to refresh and enjoy the holidays, and of course, to do that safely. I've got several things that I want to share. First of all, I just feel, I want to comment on the video, and I'm so pleased that our Public Information Officer, Net Franco, does videos for us, and she and I have talked about how videos really are an effective method of communication for our school community. And just so you know, and I know this is a strong interest of our board, is to utilize more video communication. And so Annette Franco already has many detailed plans, and that's one of them. And with our input, we will be doing more videos, features such as this, as well as information that is timely and important to folks. Now, I've done a few this year. I've done a few, and I don't want to overdo it, but collectively as a district, as a team, we definitely want to do more videos, and we hope that our parents and our parent community and our students all take a minute, two minutes, or three minutes to watch those videos. And so there's a commitment from us to utilize that method of communication more often. And this is, I think, is a great example of something that we can feature in a very short period of time, some great information, and of course, the resource of where people can get more if they need that. Okay. I do want to talk a little bit about the very important decision that we made right before the holiday break. And as we all know, this was a very difficult decision to make any kind of change in this environment, but I do want to give some updated information in terms of how that decision has impacted us. First of all, starting with the fact that prior to the winter break, we were already monitoring very closely, and we were seeing an increase of positive cases, close contacts, which was affecting our workforce. And I want to say on behalf of staff, we really appreciate the fact that our Board of Education really listened to the needs of staff and our concern about the ability to provide a workforce for our students. And these are tough decisions to make, but I want to tell you that we continue to monitor these cases throughout the holiday. While most people were on vacation, we had a dedicated group of HR administrators and other staff who were manning the telephones and making sure we were taking those phone calls from employees and tracking the cases and making sure that come January 4th, that we had a workforce to provide education for and services for our kids. And even though the numbers increased and the volume of calls and tracing that had to be done behind the scenes was just tremendous, and people working not only through the holidays but on the weekend, weekends, in particular the weekend right before January 4th, so I really commend Leona Olson, Kristen Clark, Megan Brown, Shoshana Nikano, all of those folks who really worked throughout the holiday to make sure we had that workforce ready. And then, as of January 4th, we were able to open school, we were able to provide subs, we were able to repurpose staff We were able to provide subs. We were able to repurpose staffing because secondary was at distance learning. And that's a very critical piece that, again, I so appreciate the board heard that concern. And it is working. It is working. Because we've been hearing, we've been monitoring the fact that, you know, we've had to move resources, and we had to make sure that our elementaries are supported because they're in person, but yet, we can still provide the distance learning education at our secondary schools. Now, we all know, we're tracking the numbers, and the numbers continue to increase in our county, increase in our cities, and it is impacting staff. But again, because of the work that's being done, we're making sure that we provide employees in the key spots, we're able to repurpose and reallocate different resources to, again, make sure that we can maintain our operations here in the district and maintain distance learning at secondary and our hybrid learning at elementary schools. The stories that we hear from employees, we hear them. We don't hear all of them, but we hear them. And we so appreciate and value the work of our employees, the dedication to keep educating our students, which is our mission as essential employees. And I know our board really has supported in-person learning for all kids. But if we had to make an adjustment, we wanted to make sure it's our elementary and our youngest kids that stay in person the most. And that's what we've been able to do. We're going to continue to monitor the cases. We're continuing to talk to employees, address their needs. But our mission is to support our instructional program. We're going to continue to do that. We have committed through this decision that the board made prior to the break to bring back our secondary schools, back to hybrid in-person learning, starting on January 25th. But I will commit to you that we will continue to look at this each and every day to make sure that we can provide the workforce to do that. The next thing that we have consistently heard comments and requests from our employees to go to full-day elementary learning. And I just want to acknowledge that we have some comments that are coming up that will be read later on on the agenda. But I do want to comment on that, that, you know, as we all know, right now is not the time to do that. Okay? We recognize that in many of the comments. I appreciate parents acknowledging that fact. But I do want to let everybody know that I have created a committee comprised of some district administrators as well as site principals, elementary site principals, to look at what we can do to increase our instruction at the elementary level when it becomes safe to do so. And I've stated this before that, you know, this isn't something that we can do overnight, but we are starting to plan that and look at what we can do here in this district so that when it is safe, we can make that adjustment. The other thing that we are hearing a lot of, and there'll be many comments read later on on the agenda, and we heard some earlier before closed session, is the opening up the pools. And I just want to go back and restate that prior to the winter break, we did take action to suspend all student activities for this three-week period up until January 25th. And again, that was anticipation of the surge that we expected and now are experiencing. So, really, our interest, our intent here is not to deprive our students of, you know, activities that are important and for a healthy lifestyle. It really is to maintain a consistent message that right now is the time not to bring individuals onto campus and to do that. But I have acknowledged, and I've said this before, that if there's one activity that is probably safer than the rest is to be in a swimming pool and to be distanced. So, we will be looking at the possibility of bringing back our, or reopening our pools to some of our community partners out there, but to do that safely, to do that as soon as possible, but to do that safely. So, I will be looking at that, and we'll be reaching out to those organizations when we make that confirmation date. Now, let me switch to some very, very encouraging, positive news. And we've all been seeing this on the news media about the vaccine and the fact that it is now becoming a reality. It is a reality. So, I want to provide some details of that. So, first of all, our county, Orange County Healthcare Agency, along with the Orange County Fire Authority, have worked together in partnership to create a plan. And I'm going to start with this because I was absolutely thrilled when I heard their plan. And the plan is to vaccinate all 3.2 million residents here in Orange County by July 4th. By July 4th. Okay? That's a huge monumental challenge and task. But the fact that that's what they're planning to do and their target was great news for me to hear and something I wanted to share with you. And the reason why that was, I think, such incredible news is because if this is done by July 4th, then our chances of opening in the new year in a more normal setting rather than an abnormal setting is much more likely. Okay? I can't guarantee it. Nobody can guarantee it. Nobody knows whether they'll meet that target. But the fact that they're planning and utilizing all of their resources to reach that target date, to me, was very, very encouraging. And I know parents are asking, what's it going to look like in the fall? Well, I tell you, if it's up to us, if it's up to the board, we all want it back to normal. Everybody does. But what are the circumstances? What are the requirements and guidelines going to be at that time? So, this vaccine, this plan, is going to be so critical. And the fact that people need to take the vaccine. Okay? And so, we really want to encourage people to do that. I know our county health director has been saying that it's very important that we get a very large population. I think he stated, I'm not a medical expert, somewhere around 70, 75 to 80% of our population to be vaccinated, to really reach that point where we're safe. So, very encouraging. There's a few details, a few details. They are putting together regional super pods, regional super pods, that will be providing the vaccine, and it'll be throughout Orange County. They're talking about five different locations. And the first location that they disclosed publicly was announced today. And that's at the happiest place on earth, Disneyland. Okay? So, that's the first one. But they will be creating and setting up additional super pods to give the vaccine. But they're not announcing those locations and confirming those locations yet. The vaccine, of course, is going to be given by a kind of a tiered system. Everybody cannot do it at the same time. So, they're already starting at the highest priority, which is Tier 1A. And those are our healthcare providers, so rightly so. They're getting the vaccine right now. We have been notified, and this is also very encouraging news. We were just notified this week that our healthcare workers who are employed here in the district, our nurses, our health assistants, will be eligible to do the vaccine. So, we're getting the information out to them, and they can go to the super site and get vaccinated first. Now, the other good news is that shortly after Tier 1A, I'm sorry, Phase 1A is 1B, and that's where educators are and school employees. And there will be a priority and a tier system within the education sector that we will, again, roll this out, and we will start to get our district employees vaccinated. And what we're being told is to be ready around the beginning of February. But I'm going to tell you, we're getting ready now. We're getting ready now. So, we want to move on that quickly. I know that one of their biggest challenges is the fact that it takes a lot of people to run these super pods and to give these vaccines. So, they're looking at county employees, state employees, and volunteers to really step up to make this happen for us. And I will tell you, if we can all work together and do what we have to do to meet that July 4th target, that will give us the, I think, a much greater chance to open as normal as possible, okay? With all of our kids back in the classroom. Now, I can't guarantee that. I always have to say that I can't guarantee it. But that's encouraging information there. Okay? So, and I do want to add that right now, the vaccines that are approved and are being given are for individuals aged 16 and above. So, there is no vaccine for kids younger than 16. Okay? But we are aware that there are companies who are currently doing trials for these vaccines for the children. So, anyway, so, good news, you know, hopefully, will come with that. But right now, it is happening. It is happening, and we're very excited about that. So, anyways, a lot of information, a lot of things going on. But I certainly wanted to express some positive, hopeful news for all of us. Okay? And that concludes my report for tonight.
Thank you, Superintendent Li Sung, and that is really encouraging news. I think we're all excited about that. And I know you will also be getting out that information via email to the community because not everybody is on our meeting Zoom tonight, and it is really exciting. So, hopefully, we'll get back to what we saw in the wellness video where we saw everybody sitting around without masks and being close to each other and enjoying themselves. So, now, we will move on to community input on agendized items. Trustee Matoye, would you read the statement?
Yes. This is an opportunity for the public to address the board regarding items on the regular meeting agenda via electronically submitted comments. Each speaker has three minutes of comment read time. And per Board Bylaws 9323, there is a maximum of 20 minutes of comments per topic. With board consent, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public comments depending on the topic and the number of persons submitting comments. All comments are recorded in full on the meeting video record.
Okay, and we have three comments on community input. Trustee Wigan?
My comment comes from Rebecca Volk. I am in favor of the pool equipment getting replaced as soon as possible. Once the pool opens again, it would be a great disappointment for it to be closed due to pool equipment malfunction. There has been ample time to get this done during prior closures and holidays. With zero COVID cases linked to pool use, I am in favor of the pool opening and remaining open.
The next comment is from Wendy Leece. Reed Limburg School and HVAC. I drive by and walk by Whittier School every day. I witnessed the HVAC equipment on the ground near the classrooms. It is mechanical. There are levers which a child unknowingly might pull. With the Limburg Project, I requested the board include in the proposal a bid to enclose the HVAC equipment. It is a safety issue. I also request the board enclose existing HVAC equipment at other schools as, in my humble opinion, not enclosing the equipment leaves a taxpayer open to significant exposure to litigation if a child is injured or injures others by touching the equipment. Trustee Anderson?
This comment is also from Wendy Leece on 15E2. Regarding the governance training for the CS California School Boards Association, here is a sentence from the CSBA website on board responsibilities. The role of the school board is to ensure that school districts are responsive to the values, beliefs, and priorities of their communities. Boards fulfill this role by performing the five major responsibilities. The core functions follow this statement on the website. Although the board functions as a whole to make policy, I encourage all board members to listen to constituents and advocate for our values, beliefs, and priorities. I hope board members, especially the three new members, freely bring forth all of their ideas and concerns in open board meetings. I also encourage the board to be transparent in its actions and make our Newport Mesa Public Schools the excellent schools our community deserves.
Thank you, Trustee Anderson. Okay, consent calendar. Do I have a motion to approve? And I know we have, I know we have some comments or some either items to be commented on or pulled. So, trustee Anderson?
Yeah, I sent an email, but I didn't get a response back to poll 15A1 for discussion, please. As I said in my email, each of these were individual contracts and were voted as such originally. And I think that the board should be approving or not approving extension amendments individually as well. I'm surprised to see them under one agenda item. Additionally, I would like an update on which of these projects are not yet completed and the timeline for completion. I would also like to know the dates that the finished products, projects were completed. For instance, the first one is for Donald Crote. It says on the agreement, there's actually two agreements from February, that the project would be completed no later than September of 2020. So, if there are projects that are still ongoing, I want to know why they didn't get completed in time.
So, do you want to pull this to put on discussion action? Or do you want to have someone comment and pull it?
I would. My preference is to pull it, as I requested in my email, but I did not get a response.
Okay. And then, I believe trustee Ursolu has a question or...
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, President Yelsey. I have a, I don't want to take item 15D2 regarding the California Healthy Kids Survey. I don't necessarily want to pull the item, but I do have a probing question because I know it's, I don't want to hold up the county contract at all. But if it is possible, I would love to ask Dr. Agostino if it's possible to add the Mental Health Supports Module. Because right now, it's really great. Newport Mesa purchases the additional substance abuse, social, emotional, and school climate modules. But the Mental Health Supports Module is a very particular survey tool that would help us get a sense of our kids' utilization of mental health supports. And I think, given the video we just saw and given everything that's going on, that's going to be really critical data. And I know that the cost implication is not very high. So, I just wanted to pose that question, but I don't want to hold it up or take it off the agenda.
To 16 additional questions. So, it will have a slight impact on the administration time, but nothing that should prohibit us from moving forward with that. We would ask, though, and I think trustee Ursolu kind of mentioned it, that you approve the contract tonight so that we can move forward with our contract with West Ed and with the Orange County Department of Education. And then, Dr. DiAgostino will investigate the process and the next steps to get the Mental Health Module, and we can bring that one back for approval at the February meeting.
Thank you. Is that okay with you, trustee Ursolu?
Yes, that's incredible. Thank you. I appreciate it. I think it's going to be very useful for our students. Thank you.
Thank you. So, do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Motion to approve?
Who was that?
That was Leah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion was made by trustee Ursolu.
Ursolu. Soy.
And seconded by trustee Crane, a roll call vote.
Trustee Yelsey?
Yes.
Trustee Barto?
I feel like we didn't get one of them answered back on the 15A1.
It's been pulled to discussion action.
We've been pulled to discussion action. Okay, thank you. Then, yes.
Trustee Matoye?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
We're approving the consent calendar. Trustee Ursolu?
Yes, I couldn't, the speaker cut out. I couldn't hear that. Thank you. Yes.
This is a work in process. We're making progress on this. Okay, thank you. We will move to discussion action. 16A, approve additions to the high school course of study. Mr. Drake?
Good evening, President Yelsey, board members, Superintendent Li Sung. The course of study before you this evening is our avid, or is an avid tutorial course. The avid tutorial course will provide support to Estancia High School avid students for the semester that they are not enrolled in the avid elective. the semester that they are not enrolled in the avid elective. The Estancia High School students, it's important that the Estancia High School students have opportunity to receive avid support for both of their semesters, which is why this course is being submitted to you, especially important for avid seniors who will need assistance with college admissions, college applying for scholarships and so forth. So before you this evening is this course so that the avid students are able to receive avid support for both semesters, knowing that the four by four schedule at Estancia accounts for an entire year's course in a semester. So this is just to make sure that they have that, that support. So we recommend that you approve this avid tutorial course for our four by four avid students at Estancia High School.
I had a question.
Thank you. Any question?
Yeah, I had a question. Is this currently in place at Newport Harbor as well? Or is this something we would consider? Or is it built into their curriculum because?
So the avid elective course that's part of our course of study is a year-long course, which is what most of our avid students at our comprehensive high schools access because it lasts for the year. At Estancia, right, if, if they had the avid elective the first semester, that covered the year's course.
Got it. Thank you for helping me understand the distinction.
They need a two-year course.
Yeah, I think this is fantastic. I've talked to a number of avid students who really appreciate that senior year help.
It's a wonderful program.
Any other questions?
I move to approve the addition of the avid tutorial for Estancia High School.
Second.
Moved by trustee Matoye, seconded by trustee Anderson, roll call vote.
Student Board Member Brittany Evergany.
Yes.
Trustee Yelsey.
Yes.
Trustee Barto.
Yes.
Trustee Matoye.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Trustee Crane.
Yes.
Trustee Wigan.
Yes.
Trustee Ursolu.
Yes.
Item 15A1, ratify extension of agreements with various consultants for 2019-20 maintenance projects, which we pulled from consent calendar. Mr. Lee Sung, would you like to address this?
Yeah, so I would like Tim Holcomb to provide a little more background about this item. I know that Lance Bidnick, our director of MNO, submitted this item, but Mr. Holcomb, I believe, can answer some of these questions and give a little further background.
Thank you, Superintendent Lee Sung. Yes, pardon me. As we received the emailed question about this, we provided a response to the email to the board, but I can elaborate on that tonight. But to reiterate, what we had also said was these are all maintenance projects, the typical routine maintenance projects of the district schedules during our summers, and most of that work was done last summer as was expected. I can go through each one of the individual projects. One of the things that's interesting that this brings up is how sometimes past practices don't align with what really is reality and the best practice. Past practice in this district often was to put a June 30th end date on everything because that's the end of our fiscal year. Of course, that's at the very, very beginning of summer. So a summer project is not going to be done by the end of June. Therefore, we always end up bringing these to you twice. There's nothing in the law that requires that. We could put a later end date, but now with Mr. Geisler on board as the director of purchasing, we're working on that to have folks re-understand that that's not a requirement. You don't have to put the end of the fiscal year as the end of the period on a contract and then renew it. You can just issue the contract for the amount of time that it takes. So that's one of the things we're working on. With regard to the individual projects that you see there, they were completed, in fact, as Ms. Anderson mentioned, by September, it was scheduled to be completed, and in fact, that project was. There are two projects on this list that did not get completed in the summer, and because this is always the case where, and in fact, this last year, as you know, you've seen the projects that got done this last summer, even while we're in the middle of COVID and everything, we bit off a lot this last summer, and we got a lot done. But there were two projects that because of various reasons that Mr. Bidnick knows better than I do, they were put off. One is the second item on the list, which was the HVAC Sims Hall at Newport Harbor. And the second one was the replacement of the equipment at the pool at Newport Harbor. Both of those we're working on currently to get those scheduled to, to complete as soon as we can in our schedule. So that's the reason why those need to be extended.
So a question that, yeah, the question I asked in my email is just, could you keep us apprised of those projects, particularly with the effects that they'll have on students and usage of those things? I understand how things got delayed. We had a lot of delays last summer, but I would be hopeful that we could complete those projects while they aren't currently in use, or at least plan for them to be done in the summer. That way they don't impact students further.
Yeah, as we mentioned, Mr. Bidnick and Ms. Zeresny and both of those two departments that have those types of impacts, all of our folks that do work directly with the site administrators at the sites to coordinate it, the first objective is to do it when it has no impact. The second is to do it when it has the least impact. And the third, of course, is if it must have an impact, to make sure that the impact is understood and mitigated to the degree that it can. So all of the directors who have projects go through that process with their local site administrator, who communicates with everyone who's involved at the site and including with the community oftentimes.
And once again, there's no financial implication of doing this.
Thank you.
Trustee Anderson, did you have any more questions?
Yes. For the Newport Harbor HVAC for Sims Hall, when is the, what is, when is that anticipated to be completed? And what is the current work that is being done, particularly related to what's going on? I mean, I'm glad we're closed right now, but I'm concerned that that hasn't been completed prior when there were students there. So when is the completion date that's anticipated?
I would have to ask for Mr. Bidnick to be elevated to panelists so that he can address your question. I don't know the, the director. Or I can follow up with you later.
I think it's important, an important question, so if he is available, if he's on the call, that would be great.
I believe he is.
Any other questions? Okay, do I have a motion?
Are we waiting for the answer? Mr. Bidnick is being elevated?
Is he, is he on?
I believe that Rosie is connecting him.
Okay, I think I have audio now. If you can hear me. Okay, I should have audio. I hope you can hear me. Hello? Hello?
I see him on, I see his mute button is off, but I don't hear.
Here he comes, I see. He's on the bottom, it looks like.
Oh.
We're trying to make this work. I don't know if you can hear me. It looks like my video is up. Maybe with computer audio? Hello? Okay, all right, sorry about that. Good evening, thank you for the question. The specific question is to the timeline for Sims Hall. We are working with the engineer right now to finalize the bid documents, and our plan is to have the project ready for bidding here shortly for completion over the summer. We do not want this to impact students.
Here Lance, could you please get closer to your microphone? They're having a hard time hearing you.
Let's see. I don't think my microphone is, I think my volume should be as high as it can go. So still having any problems hearing me? Or I can speak louder? My microphone is at full volume. I can't get it to go any higher.
Maybe you can hear him.
Okay, can you hear me?
While we're waiting for him to come back, one of my follow-up questions for him is we on consent for tonight is 15A2, which is, was approving the agreement with the same firm, Optimum Energy Design for HVAC Needs Assessment at Limburg. So if there was a delay that could have been prevented, I just want us to specifically make sure that that does not happen if they're continuing working on our HVAC needs.
Trustee Anderson, it's hard to hear you too.
I can speak directly into it. Is that better?
My follow-up question to that when we have him come back is today on the consent calendar for 15A2 was approving an agreement with the same firm, Optimum Energy Design for HVAC Needs Assessment at Limburg. So if there is not necessarily a good reason for the delay for the HVAC to be, to have been delayed at Newport Harbor, I just want to make sure that we are sending a message to these folks that we need them to complete projects on, on time, particularly in the time of COVID. We need our HVAC at optimum performance.
So while we are hopefully giving Mr. Bidnick for your first question, a quick up, our answer or information regarding your second, that item A2 is funded by Catalyst, which is a preschool that is leasing our facilities, and it is a project to determine what it would cost and how they might have air conditioning. So it is entirely for them. This is just a pass-through for us.
Yeah, I just want, if we're continuing to have a business relationship with this firm, I want us to make sure that projects are completed on time if there is not a solid reason. That's my question.
Is Mr., Mr. Bidnick?
It looks like he left and is going to re-enter.
I can follow up to, to get you the answers to your question, I believe, in, in respect to the last part, that it's not a matter that the consultant is behind or is not performing. Up here he is.
All right, is this any better, I hope? I switched devices, is this, can you hear me? Hello? Any luck hearing me? Do I have any audio?
We can hear you Lance.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, switch devices. The HVAC project at Sims is, we're finalizing the bid documents, and we are expecting to release that here shortly. The timeline for construction is this summer. We do not want to do this while students are present.
2021, summer of 2021 was always the plan.
Summer of 2021 is the plan, correct.
Do you have a timeline on the Newport Harbor pool as well?
The Newport Harbor pool was just bid out. The big challenge that we have right now is the CIF calendar. We were trying to do that and take advantage of the downtime. We're working with the athletics and the school departments to coordinate the time as well as all of the outside user groups to make sure that we have the availability. Most likely that will be a summer project, but we're, we're still working on the timeline. That project did bid out, and I believe we are taking the award of contracts to the board next month.
Is the pool unusable as it is now?
No, the pool is usable currently as far as the equipment and pool conditions are concerned. It says a leak in some of the equipment, old filters and old pipes that we need to redo, but it does not hinder the usability of the pool.
Is there, is this HVAC at Newport Harbor, is that a modification? Or is it an upgrade? Or is it installing it for the first time? What is currently in place for Sims Hall?
It's replacing existing equipment that has met its useful life and is ready for replacement.
Thank you.
Are there any more questions?
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bidnick.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming on.
All right, sorry about the difficulty.
This is discussion action to ratify extension of agreements with various consultants for 2019-20 maintenance projects.
So moved. Second.
That was trustee Matoye.
Moved by trustee Crane.
Oh Crane, I'm sorry.
Seconded by trustee Matoye.
Moved by trustee Crane, seconded by trustee Barto.
Me.
Matoye.
Matoye, I'm sorry, I have echoes coming from.
And you can't see mouths moving, so you have no clue.
Roll call vote.
Student Board Member Brittany Evergany.
Yes.
Trustee Yelsey.
Yes.
Trustee Barto.
Yes.
Trustee Matoye.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Trustee Crane.
Yes.
Trustee Wigan.
Yes.
Trustee Ursolu.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on now to community, community input on non-agendized items. Trustee Matoye.
Thank you. This is an opportunity for the public to address the board regarding items not on the regular meeting agenda via electronically submitted comments. Each speaker has three minutes of comments read time and per Board bylaws 9323, there is a maximum of 20 minutes of comments per topic. With board consent, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public comments depending on the topic and the number of persons submitting comments. All comments are recorded in full on the meeting video record.
Okay, we are going to, we are going to give two minutes to try to get through all of these comments. So the first topic is the pool athletic and facilities. We have 38 comments.
Okay, my comment is from Megan Guess. Please open the pools at Newport Harbor. NMUSD has closed the campuses and pools through January 25th, not out of concern that the students and staff are contracting COVID on campus, but due to staffing issues due to COVID. The coaches of Newport Beach Water Polo are the ones who open, maintain, and close the pool facility during our use of it, therefore having no impact on the district staffing issues. Furthermore, Newport Beach Water Polo has been following and will continue to follow and approve COVID-19 safety protocol.
My comment is from Dear Bla Gaskin. Open the pools to clubs that have demonstrated safety protocols to protect the health of our children.
My comment is from Jose de La Hara. Dear trustees and superintendent Lee Sung, I rate as a parent of a 16-year-old Costa Mesa High School junior. He plays water polo and swims for Costa Mesa High School. He has been out of the water since before Christmas due to the high school shutting down sports. My son was looking forward to be in the top shape to try out for the Newport Beach Fire Lifeguard Department as a trainee, well with, well will potentially being out of the water for five weeks. He is at grade disadvantage along many, with many kids at Newport Harbor and CDM. 90% of the local recruits are from the city of Newport Beach, and Huntington Beach lifeguards come from local schools. These athletes are the lifeguard of the department and the junior lifeguard departments. Athletes at all the local high schools are not able to train for the tryouts on February 7th. As a 29-year veteran of the Newport Beach Lifeguard Department, I can attest to the impact of these young athletes in the community. Also, let's not forget the 1,400 local kids in the Newport Mesa are looking to train for the coveted Newport Beach Junior Program, and the vast majority of these kids are not able to train for the very competitive test. My fourth grader at Davis and eighth grader at CMMs are out of the water, not being able to train for the test, and their Zoom PE won't cut it to get their stamina up to passing the test. Please let the local aquatics clubs operate and support our athletes and community with lifeguard tryouts and junior lifeguard training and normal, safe, active swimming lessons, swimming activities.
My comment is from Elizabeth Reed. The Newport Mesa School District has closed the campuses and pools through January 25th, not out of a concern that students and staff are contracting COVID on campus, but due to staffing issues due to COVID. The coaches of Newport of Newport Beach Water Polo are the ones who open, maintain, and close the pool facility during our use of it, therefore having no impact on the district's staffing issues. Please reopen the pool.
My comment is from Luke de Lahara. My name is Luke de Lahara, and I am an eighth grader at Costa Mesa Middle School. For the last four years, I have been playing water polo and swimming at Costa Mesa Aquatics Club. Since March, our coaches got creative and we did Zoom and beach workouts. We were fortunate to return in August, and it was great to be able to swim again, but then bad news as we got shut down at Christmas. I was looking forward to qualifying for the junior lifeguards in March with a top group time, but we have been out of the water for at least three weeks, and with the long layoff, my training has been off. Please let the NMUSD pools open and let the children train to achieve their goals. My older brother was training daily to try out for Newport Beach lifeguards and follow my mom and dad's footsteps of being a Newport Beach lifeguard, but he has been out of the water by the shutdown of the pools. Please let my brother train and his teammates train again.
The next comment is from Judd Borgreev. The Newport Mesa Unified School District has closed the campuses and pools through January 25th, not out of concern that the students and staff are contracting COVID on campus, but due to staffing issues due to COVID. The coaches of Newport Beach Water Polo are the ones who open, maintain, and close the pool facility during our use of it, therefore having no impact on the district's staffing issues. Furthermore, MBWP has been following and will continue to follow and approve COVID-19 safety protocol. The CDM pool is open for lap swimming to the public. Why is Newport Pool not open? Please open the pool for our kids to get exercise. Our student athletes on swim and polo teams have dedicated coaches ready and willing to work with them. Please don't give us some BS excuse that we don't have the staffing. Let our kids work out and try to live their dreams. You know, the ones you keep squashing. Time to open up, teach, and let our children live.
Next comment is from Lori Ann Christie. Dear Sora Madam, I'm emailing to request that you reconsider your decision to close the pool facilities in the district for the month of January. My children play both water polo in the district, one at Mesa and one at Harbor. The coaches from both the CMAC and the Newport Water Polo programs have followed strict distancing, mask and illness check protocols since their practices resumed last fall. There is little evidence, I believe, that points to swim polo practices being a significant source of transmission. Emotional, physical, and social well-being benefits for the kids when they are allowed to practice far outweigh the risks of potential spread. Thank you for your consideration. I understand there are no easy choices for our community right now, and I appreciate your hard work to keep our kids safe.
My comment is from Tyler Parks. The district and the board have repeatedly expressed their concerns about the students' mental health and wellness over the course of the pandemic, but voted to shut down all athletic facilities and programs as part of the temporary closure of secondary schools through January 25th. The district's high school pools are significant community assets that host youth swimming, water polo clubs, and junior lifeguard training, serving hundreds of kids in Costa Mesa and Newport Beach. Please take immediate action to reopen the district pools for these youth groups. Secondary schools were closed for staffing reasons. The pools and the youth operations do not impose a staffing burden. The groups are run by outside coaches who have incorporated all COVID safety measures and health protocols and will continue to do so. The mental, physical, and social health benefits that these programs provide are so important to the district's students and wholesale, a wholesale shutdown of these programs is a misguided and lazy response by the district. With one simple vote, the district at no cost or additional burden can ensure the hundreds of kids get back to a little normalcy and a whole lot of wellness.
This is from Yakov Vlok. The Newport Beach Water Polo Program is a nonprofit entity and are not affiliated with any schools. Why do you have the pools closed? The coaches and players are responsible for opening, closing, and maintaining the pool area during their use. This should be opened immediately.
This is from Keith Ryan. Newport NMUSD closing the campus for athletics for reasons outside of COVID maintenance is detrimental to both the immediate school community, student athletes, and outside user groups that feed directly into the community and schools in NMUSD. Other local schools are continuing to practice lending NMUSD student athletes a stark disadvantage to an already challenging athletic year. How can they be effective in their sports and demonstrate excellence needed to pursue collegiate athletics if they cannot train and reach their potential? How can they retain their mental and physical health with, without safe, healthy outlets? Outside user groups of nearly 500 student athletes in the district are also being unfairly put on pause for reasons that have no relationship to the continued safety measures they have operated with for over four months. With zero issues related to COVID, these groups pay upward of 10,000 each month in renting facilities, and Newport, NMUSD is without these funds for seemingly no rational reason related to their operation. Please follow the course of other local districts that have continued to allow athletics to move forward safely at a minimum with the practice that will give them all the best chance for future success in their lives as student athletes. They have already been stripped of so much, there is no reason to deny them a safe, healthy outlet right now.
Karen Kelly says NMUSD has closed the campuses and pools through January 25th, not out of concern that the students and staff are contracting COVID on campus or in the pool, but due to staffing issues because of COVID. The coaches of both, of Newport Beach Water Polo are the ones who open, maintain, and close the pool facilities during our use of it, therefore having no impact on the district's staffing issues. Furthermore, Newport Beach Water Polo has been following and will continue to follow an approved COVID safety protocol. Please open the Newport Harbor pool to Newport Beach Water Polo as soon as possible so the kids can practice and play according to all COVID-19 safety protocols. Thank you for your consideration.
My comment is from Blair Dickerson. We live in the school district, and our two children participate in Newport Beach swimming with Coach Kevin Potter. He took over the program a couple of years ago, and it greatly improved its organizational and professional standard. When he was able to open, he runs it by the book. Temperature checks before entry, and keep kids appropriately separated. In studies across the country, there have been shown that swimming is not a transmitter of COVID. Kids need these programs for their physical and mental health. Please reconsider your pool closure and base decision on science and proven facts. It's shown to not be a risk, so please open the pool. Thank you for your considerate neighbor and taxpayer, Blair Dickerson.
The next comment is from Cindy Luckett. Please reopen the swimming pools. Chlorine is proven to kill the virus. Allowing our students to access to exercise ensures their bodies and minds remain strong and healthy during the pandemic. We urge you to open the pools again immediately.
The next comment is from Jill Hunt. Please open the pools. The swimmers and water polo players are suffering and being kept from training for their sports. Swimmers need a pool. This is different than other sports. Students can swim safely without contact. Keeping some off-campus because everyone cannot be on campus is not serving our students well. Newport Mesa is falling behind. Many other districts have open pools. This is an activity that can be handled safely. Make it happen.
My comment is from Mason Hunt. Please open the pool. If you can't do it for the high school kids, then open the facility for use for the club that you do not oversee. I am a high school junior and I'm looking to go play water polo in college. Swimming is different than other sports. Each day that I am out of the pool slows my progress. It is not like running where you can take a day off and hope back in and be in the same physical shape. Each day I get more out of swimming shape and so does my team. She. We are able to play again. Not being in swim shape will hurt us as a team and hurt my shot at a college spot. Please open the pool. CIF rules prohibit me from going to play at another school. I am stuck. All the shutdowns are causing lasting damage. If you can't let the high school player play, open the facility for the club to remove any of your perceived liability risks.
Katie Kossov says, the coaches of CDM Girls and Boys Water Polo are the ones who open, maintain, and close the pool facility during our use of it, therefore having no impact on the district's staffing issues. Furthermore, CDM Girls and Boys Water Polo has been following and will continue to follow an approved COVID-19 safety protocol.
This is from Heather Burton, Superintendent and trustees. My children attend Davis Magnet and Costa Mesa Middle School. They are in dire need to be active and be outside. For the last four months, they have been actively swimming with Costa Mesa Aquatics Club, and they are seeing their friends even with a mask on. Swimming is a great exercise that has been proven to be safe during COVID times. We understand that Newport Mesa has closed down due to staffing shortages in the teacher ranks, but all the pools are self-sustaining, and the coaches do a great job following all the COVID protocols. Please let the kids of the community get back to swimming safely.
Tori Rimlinger says, I would like to request that our water polo and swim athletes are allowed to practice and use the pool once again. The players and coaches had no COVID outbreaks when they were allowed to use the pool and facility previously. Our children need to be able to exercise and practice their sport. They need this opportunity both for their physical health and their mental health. Other schools are practicing without problems. It just doesn't make sense to restrict the use of the Newport Harbor High School pool. Please allow them to practice and use the facility today. Please support our athletes and allow them back in the pool. Thank you for your consideration.
My comment's from Tara De Ambrosia. I hope this email finds you all in good health. To begin, I want to thank you all for the tireless hours of work you have put in balancing safety, academics, health, fitness, and the overall mental health of our kids. I can't even begin to imagine how difficult this has been on all of you. Like many other parents, I am writing to urge you to please open Newport Mesa Unified School District pools. Irvine, Foothill, Tustin, Haina Beach, they are all open. I truly do not understand how basketball is still playing in various gyms all over Orange County. Swimmers need a pool. Other sports have several other options. Our athletes do not. At the very least, please consider releasing the facilities for outside use. Additionally, the coaches and our student athletes are the only ones permitted on the pool deck and in the water. There are no showers or locker rooms open. There is nothing to clean up, therefore eliminating the need for custodial. There is no loitering. Temperatures are taken and masks are worn until the student athletes enter the water, where they remain six feet apart at all times. The same protocol applies after practice. The biggest concern I share with many others is the risk of injury when our season does begin. There are so many teams that are practicing and getting stronger. Our kids will be at a disadvantage when they are finally allowed to train again. Two days out of the water is equivalent to one week. These kids do not take time off. It is imperative that they train daily to keep their bodies strong. It is an intense sport, and there is a serious risk of injury if they are not in proper shape. We have witnessed firsthand a decline in our children's mental health and a rise in anxiety due to no social interactions and no outlet to practice what they love. Thank you for your time and consideration.
The next comment is from Jamie Horton. Please open the NMUSD pools back up ASAP for youth sports. CMAC has been using the pool and following and will continue to follow and approve COVID-19 safety protocol. It's imperative that we get our youth back participating in physical activity for the health and wellness of our children. We have been using the pool since September with strict protocols in place, even when school was not in session with no COVID-19-related issues or outbreaks. Swimming is one of the safest activities youth can be participating in during this pandemic. Thank you for your consideration and opening back up the pools as soon as possible.
Next comment is from Amy Aluf. The Newport Mesa, Newport Mesa has closed the campuses and pools through January 25th, not out of concern that the students and staff are contracting COVID on campus, but due to staffing issues due to COVID. The coaches of Newport Beach Water Polo are the ones who open, maintain, and close the pool facility during our use of it, therefore having no impact on the district's staffing issues. Furthermore, Newport Water Polo has been following and will continue to follow and approve COVID-19 safety protocol.
My comment is from Elise Hardisty. Three out of four of my children participate in water-based sports. Soccer, football, baseball, and hockey are just a few sports that I am able to list where kids still get to practice. It is not fair that our kids are at the mercy of the school district. They are already unable to be at school and play with their friends. For their mental health, give them the pools back. Also, junior guards is rite of passage. Kids need to train for swim tests. The kids need this.
This is from Dr. Kimberly Jenk. Please open the Newport Harbor pool for the mental and physical health of our students. There is not a staffing issue for the pool because the coaches manage the pool area. It has no impact on district's staffing issues. It is a safe environment for our students where COVID protocol is being followed.
This is from Julie Castillo. Please reconsider the closure of the NHHS and CDM pool facilities. These are amazing outlets for the student athlete population, especially the water polo and swimming athletes, as well as general community members to exercise while managing to operate under strict COVID guidelines. Exercise is critical to maintaining a healthy immune system, which is key to fighting off disease and illness. Also, the coaching staff of Newport Beach Water Polo are the ones who open, maintain, and close the pool facility during our use of it, therefore having no impact on the different district's staffing issues. Thank you for your time and concern.
Michael LaSueur. I am repeatedly asking that the Board of Education allow the pool at Newport Harbor High School to immediately reopen for use by the Newport Beach Water Polo Club. While I understand and support your reasons for returning high school students to remote, remote learning, the corresponding pool closure is a classic example of the kind of overreach and one-size-fits-all regulation that inevitably, inevitably creates unforeseen collateral damage. The stated need for the district's closing of high school campuses and pools through, at a minimum, January 25th, was the staffing issues related to the recent surge in COVID cases. Unfortunate, but understood. With teachers unavailable or unwilling to teach in person and a shortage of qualified substitutes, it makes it very difficult to continue in-person instruction. However, the resulting blanket mandate from the district, which simultaneously shut down the use of the Newport Harbor pool, completely missed the mark. Unlike the high school faculty, there are no staffing issues related to Newport Beach Water Polo Club, whose coaches open, maintain, and close the pool facility while rigorously following the most up-to-date COVID-19 safety protocols when the pool is in use. Furthermore, while I do not doubt the best intentions driving the return of Newport Mesa High Schools to remote learning, as always, there are unintended consequences, and in this case, the sweeping shutdown has deprived Newport Beach Water Polo members of a positive and healthy outlet that has only become more vital to their physical and social development in this unprecedented time of isolation and inactivity. With its strict following of the most rigorous guidelines, the success of Newport Beach Water Polo's COVID safety protocol is undeniable. There have been zero incidents of COVID amongst the players or coaches related to the club's use of the pool. There is simply no empirical reason why the club should not be allowed to resume its activities at Newport Harbor. The welfare of our children's physical and mental health must be of primary concern to the Board of Education.
Two minutes and a 20-minute time period.
Can I finish the sentence? Okay. And with that in mind, I implore you to reconsider the, it's a long sentence, sorry, the overreaching shutdown, and once again, allow the Newport Beach Water Polo Club to use the Newport Harbor pool.
That's the end of the 20-minute period on this topic.
Oh, that's the end of 20 minutes?
Yes.
Okay, before we move on to the next topic, Superintendent Lee Sung, would you like to comment on any?
Yes, thank you, President Yelsey. I just wanted to repeat what I shared in my superintendent's report earlier in the meeting, that I do acknowledge the interest of our board to get our pools reopened as soon as possible, but of course, always safely. So we, as staff, will be looking at when we can do that. It will be before the 25th, but we will be looking at a date and will be communicating that to these organizations. I also want to just clarify for any member of the public that this is a non-agendized item, so the board cannot go into discussion and cannot take action on it. But for this particular topic, board action is not needed to make that change. So we don't have to wait till the next board meeting to make that decision and that announcement. Okay, so just want to clarify that.
Thank you for that clarification. Our next topic is reopening of schools. We have 10 comments, and let's see if we can get them all in.
And, okay. I needed it. Thank you.
Two minutes, two minutes.
Two minutes. Tiffany Jo. I urge the Newport Mesa School Board to create a committee to design a plan to increase the elementary level from hybrid to a full agents of instruction. While I know our teachers are working harder than ever, the current hybrid plan simply does not provide enough time for rich instruction that is so needed during these formative educational years. As a parent to a third and fifth grader, I can see significant learning gaps starting to develop. My family has been fortunate to be able to hire tutors to assist my children, but I have deep concerns for families who are not able to do this, and believe the learning gaps for our kids will continue to grow if we cannot get full-time instruction. I am a high school teacher, currently teaching under the secondary hybrid model in Irvine Unified, and I feel confident that schools have plans in place to keep everyone safe, safe. Safe. Irvine Unified has been able to develop a plan to have elementary students spend half the day with their teacher and the other half of the day with instructional aids to further learning. These cohorts are capped at 14 students and then switch between their teacher and 1A in cohorts A and B. Irvine Unified Elementary Schools have also not seen significant COVID numbers under this plan. Please consider having a team of teachers explore some of these options to allow our kids to learn full day before the end of the 2021 school year closes. As a high school teacher, sadly, I see the impact of educational deficits when students reach high school, and I would be saddened to see many of our students suffering educationally for years to come. I am writing to request that Newport Mesa open school pools to re -- to youth community programs, even though the secondary schools are closed for in-person learning due to staffing concerns. My children, ages eight and 10, have been swimming with Newport Beach Swimming and are currently unable to swim at Newport Harbor High School as a result of this closure. I can attest to the safety protocols of Coach Kevin and Newport Beach Swimming. The number of participants is kept low and every child is screened before entry of the swimming staff.
My comment is from Sonia. Hello and hope all is well. To begin, we'd like to -- we'd like again to express our sincere appreciation for all of the continued hard work that the district schools and staff have done to successfully meet these challenging times. We've become aware of an unofficial solicitation push within the parent community to voice support for a return to full day. Given the current intensity of COVID-19 in our local community, we are quite shocked to learn of this push. Rather, we would like to voice our opinion to suggest a temporary return to distance learning for the reasons below. Orange County's seven-day average positivity rate is at 17.1%, with the last five days exceeding 19%. Local rates are similar with 92627 at 16.9%, 92663 at 10.3%. Weekly zip code level data to be updated again tomorrow. Orange County and Southern California hospitalizations are at record highs. ICU hospital capacity is at 0% and only 5.9% adjusted. At the macro level, the U.S. in the midst of a significant third wave with record numbers of cases and deaths, similar figures reported in Europe and abroad. The current Level 2 hybrid model is very effective, as was the formal Level 3 distance learning model. Like others, we can't wait to return to our usual activities to get our children back to school full-time, but only when it is safe to do so for staff, students, and families. Thank you again for all your efforts and in advance for your consideration of our concerns. For reference, the WHO suggests less than 5% for at least 14 days for schools to remain open, a rate also echoed by Dr. Burks.
This comment is from Lisa Brennan. I'd like to know what the plan is to bring our kids back to school full-time. I recently withdrew my kids from Newport Heights Elementary for a full-time program at a learning center. This is a very expensive option for a family, but the district has left us no choice. I would like to send my kids back to NHES in the fall, but private schools and learning centers are asking for commitments for the 2021-20 school, 22 school year now. This uncertainty isn't good for our kids or for our family finances. A plan in going back to school should be a top priority, and I'd like it to be on the -- be added to the agenda.
The next comment is from Michelle Kincaid. Why are our schools not open to full-time in-person instruction when other districts are making it work? Per the district dashboard, the rate of transmission at our schools is close to zero. I have no faith in Newport Mesa at this point. I have already pulled my fourth grader as I watched his confidence completely depleted due to failing grades and lack of support from the school system. He is and has always been an excellent student, but two hours a day of instruction was not working for him, and he vocalizes his frustration regarding it daily. The mental health of our kids is at risk and should be a high priority as we are approaching this, the one-year mark into this pandemic. As a registered nurse working on the front lines, I fully support the opening of our schools to full-time instruction. The learning opportunities and the mental health of our students are at stake here. Please do the right thing for these kids and open our schools to full-time in-person instruction.
My comment is from AJ Lenardi. This letter contains links to aid with you understanding and resource. Hello, I hope this email finds you well. The mid-March goal of opening is ambitious and it is commendable to find the effort and work towards getting us back to normal. However, I don't think it will be possible or safe to do so until commonly spread outside of classrooms is halted with safety measures or vaccines. This is the UK right now where the B117 strain has taken root. It has a few mutations that make it more contagious. How did this happen? The UK kept their schools open during lockdowns. They noticed the strain was higher in percentages among people under 18. It is capable of very efficient spread. The U.S. might lag one to two months behind the UK, putting this sort of rise right around March. Look below, the strain is higher in the kids. This can mean one of two things. One, it's a new strain and since there are schools open, they are more likely to spread a new strain, meaning kids spread the new strain and schools help that. Or, the new strain is better at infecting kids, or both. The virus is not benign for kids. We don't know the long-term effects yet, but these are the other viruses that have a super antigen like SARS-CoV-2 has. There are two links, one to the National Institute of Health government publication 27525406, and a link to PNAS.org/content/117/41/25254. This super antigen is believed to be causing the syndrome in kids.
Amber Saib says, what is our full-time plan for elementary schools to resume full session? We are eager to resume school full-time.
Becky Betel says, I was disappointed to read through the school board's agenda for tonight and not see any mention of what our school district is doing to get our kids back to school full-time. This should be your number one priority. It has been 10 months since our public school children have been able to attend school full-time, yet we have not heard of any type of plan to get our students, and in particular our elementary students, back full-time. We have watched many of our friends and former classmates going back full-time in September and even more leave our schools to transfer to these full-day private options through the year due to this lack of action and planning from our district. This has created a huge divide of disparity between private school families and public school families in our community and could cause irreparable harm for many students in the long term. I'm saddened that our schools and district has become a shadow of its former self and since no plan has been dispersed by our district leadership for even getting back full-time in the fall, many of these families feel forced to commit to another year of private school options in the next two weeks. We need a plan of action now. How do we get back full-time? What do you need and when will it happen? Teachers should be getting the vaccination in the next few weeks based on Governor Newsom's latest plan and his desire to see all students back full-time. How will this new information and additional state funding be utilized by our school district to get us back full-time as quick as possible?
Lindsay Anderson says, elementary schools need to be on a full-time schedule.
This is from P. Simon. As an advocate for public health, I would like the following two letters to be read for the record. I, as a physician, urge you to reconsider the opening of schools as the coronavirus epidemic is now surging once again. The current caseload is surging exponentially and without much tighter measures, a tragic sequence of events is inevitably going to take place. A recent study from Morgan Kelly of the Princeton Environmental Institute has found that super-spreader events are the rule, not the exception. Most super-spreaders are young adults or children, and opening of schools will result in a catastrophic rise in cases in the state of California. A massive rise in cases in Israel was predicated on the Israel's government decision to open schools without preconditions, causing a, an unprecedented spike in preventable deaths and tragedy. We can prevent tragedy and we can prevent further death of innocent Americans and Californians by continuing to adhere to online learning and home-schooled learning to help augment the education of our children. If vaccine will be available as well via Moderna and Pfizer likely in weeks. It is my great hope that if we can hang on just a month or two, that we will find resolution and avoid catastrophic consequences by avoiding opening schools too early. I also recognize the political difficulty you are in, but sometimes the right thing to do contradicts the popular opinion of the day. I appreciate your time and attention to this matter. Sincerely, Dr. David Karp Yarlar. Due to the impairment COVID infections causes, having kids in schools at risk of the virus may be counterintuitive to academic pursuits. The website, www.the times.co.uk/ article/coronavirus.
The next comment is from Amanda Kilpatrick. I would like to know when our students will be allowed to go back full-time to school for the elementary school level. Private elementary schools have been in session this year full-time, and it is frustrating that the NMUSD is still short two and a half hours. Okay, the next topic is diversity and inclusion in school curriculum. Trustee Anderson.
Yes, the comment is from Juliette Zabazija. Requesting that the district require and support a well-rounded history and social studies curriculum.
My comment is from Dina Lazarova. I'm writing to ask the board to reevaluate Newport Mesa's history and social studies curriculums to be more diverse and inclusive in elementary school and to tell the total historical truth in junior high and high school. As a former Newport Mesa student, grades 2 through 12, I can certainly speak to the deficiencies in my own education, deficiencies I didn't fully grasp until my freshman year at Stanford University. Had I been better prepared, I would have been able to more effectively navigate the social intricacies of the global society I was now part of. But beyond that, I would have been closer to finding compassion and fostering the perspective, strength, and sensitivity to become a strong, informed individual, woman, citizen, parent, teacher, and community leader. If we don't properly inform our kids, they can't be the generation to enact the change, acceptance, and stability. Our generation can only hope the future holds. In light of the present-day assault on democracy and social inclusivity, this review can't wait. As a former middle school educator in Corona del Mar, I felt the urgency for said curriculum changes even a decade ago. Now, as the parent of a fourth grader at Lincoln Elementary, that urgency has become immediate. Thank you in advance for your consideration. Sincerely, Dina Lazarova.
Stephanie Robson says, I'm a parent of two NMUSD students with another starting kindergarten next year. The events of last week, including the assault on the Capitol Building on January 6th, as well as the racial inequity protests over the summer, have reminded us all that we must own the education of our children to overcome hate, violence, and racial and gender inequity. I would like to request that the NMUSD Board take a proactive stance to update curriculum, starting with kindergarten all the way through 12th grade in order to ensure that history and social studies are being taught with a focus on diversity and inclusion. We must not teach textbooks that exclusively focus on the experience of one group of people to the exclusion of others. We must make sure that the history and perspective of Black, Latinx, Native American, Asian Americans, and all races, as well as all genders, are included in our approach. History and social studies must play a vital role in helping our students understand how historical inequity still creates a racial and gender imbalance of power and resources. This should be taught in an age-appropriate way focusing on diversity and inclusion in the elementary school age group. In junior high and high school, students should be able to understand the brutal reality of history from many perspectives. There should not be a rose-colored teaching of our history. Only learning from the truths of what has happened in the past can we begin to understand where we find ourselves today. It is my belief that our history curriculum is not fulfilling this essential need. Our PFO Board at Woodland and Kaiser Elementary has created a Diversity and Inclusion Council, who is working directly with the schools. We need the NMUSD Board to meet us and take up this important work. As a parent, I am not aware of what is currently happening with the Human Relations Task Force and have yet to see changes in my children's curriculum.
This next comment is from Chelsea LuBandy. Dear NMUSD Superintendent and Board of Trustees, I am writing to ask that students be taught a well-rounded history and social studies curriculum, including everyone's perspective. Please consider a review of all curriculum in terms of inclusion and diversity, as well as how you are preparing students to build on racial and gender equality and set a goal for the district to identify and require the use of certain supplementary materials for each grade level in time for the start of the next school year. Sincerely, Chelsea LuBandy, 5th grade.
Sarah Mooney sent a letter on January 11th. Dear Newport Mesa Superintendent and Board of Trustees, I am writing to ask that the district use all resources at its disposal to teach students a well-rounded history and social studies curriculum. The curriculum should include numerous perspectives to avoid giving students the impression that one's perspective is true and the others are inconsequential. Such a curriculum should be coupled with many discussions about the distinction between fact and opinion, how to engage critical thinking, the importance of seeking out different perspectives, and how to have civil debates. The insurrection at the Capitol, the events leading up to the Black Lives Matter protests, and the responses to those protests are all examples of why we need to ensure that all perspectives are taken into account. They are also examples of why our students need to learn critical thinking skills and know how to differentiate between facts and opinions. I would like to join the calls of other parents in requesting that the Newport Mesa Board take a proactive stance to update the curriculum, starting with kindergarten all the way through 12th grade, in order to ensure that history and social studies are being taught with a focus on diversity and inclusion. We must not teach textbooks that exclusively focus on the experience of one group of people to the exclusion of others. We must make sure that the history and perspectives of Black, Latinx, Native American, Asian Americans, and all others, as well as women, are included in our approach, starting at kindergarten. History and social studies must be an ongoing way to help our students understand how historical inequity still creates a racial and gender imbalance of power and resources. This should be taught in age-appropriate, in an age-appropriate way focusing on diversity and inclusion in the elementary school age group. In junior high and high school, students should be able to understand the brutal reality of global and American history from many perspectives. There should not
My comment is from Jude LuBandy, January 11th, 2021. Dear NMUSD Superintendent and Board of Trustees, I am writing to ask you that the district use all resources at its disposal to teach students a well-rounded history and social studies curriculum. The curriculum should include numerous perspectives to avoid giving students the impression that one perspective is true and the others are inconsequential. Such a curriculum should be coupled with many discussions about the distinction between fact and opinion, how to engage critical thinking, the importance of seeking out differing perspectives, and how to have civil debates. The insurrection at the Capitol, the events leading up to the Black Lives Matter protests, and the responses to those protests are all examples of why we need to ensure that all perspectives are taken into account. They are also examples of why our students need to learn critical thinking skills to know how to differentiate between facts and opinions. I would like to join the calls of other parents in requesting that NMUSD Board takes a proactive stance to update the curriculum, starting with kindergarten all the way through 12th grade, in order to ensure that history and social studies are being taught with a focus on diversity and inclusion. We must not teach textbooks that exclusively focus on the experience of one group of people to the exclusion of others. We must make sure that the history and perspective of Black, Latinx, Native American, Asian Americans, and all others, as well as women, are included in our approach, starting at kindergarten. History and social studies must be an ongoing way to help our students understand how historical inequity still creates a racial and gender imbalance of power and resources. This should be taught in an age-appropriate way focusing on diversity and inclusion in the elementary school age group. In junior high and high school, students should be able to understand the brutal reality of global and American history from many perspectives.
The next comment is from Andrea Heslington. I'm a parent of two NMUSD students and this year joined the Kaiser-Woodland PFO Diversity and Inclusion Council that is working to ensure an inclusive community and help prepare students to thrive in a multicultural world. I feel very strongly that NMUSD can reexamine the curriculum, starting with kindergarten through 12th grade, to help ensure that history and social studies are being taught in through 12th grade, to help ensure that history and social studies are being taught in an age appropriate way focusing on diversity and inclusion. I've been pointing out the incomplete presentation of historical events to my children since they began their career at NMUSD. For example, this fall, my children came home with an abundance of materials reflecting pilgrims and Native Americans living in harmony. The way American history is taught, particularly particularly alienates students of color and emits significant events from the American past. Feel good history for some inevitably amounts to feel bad history for everyone else. We must make special efforts and take time to teach effectively against these archetypes. American history as currently taught has a potential to offer many students to be to offend many students and their families. Our district and teachers have the opportunity to more accurately present historical facts. NMUSD can play a role in changing how history is taught by supporting teachers who put innovative approaches into practice. We need to produce Americans of all social classes, racial backgrounds and all genders who command the power of history. We should show our students that race, gender and identity are not taboo classroom subjects. They are important elements of the human experience. We have an institutional racism problem in this country and we've been in denial. The idea that ugly historical events must be forgotten, distorted or skimmed over and simply remember the things we regard as credible and inspiring creates a history that loses its value. It paints perfect men and noble nations, but it does not tell the truth. Surely it is possible to teach accurate history.
The next comment is from Amy Oliver. I have a son at Newport Coast Elementary and I support the teaching of a well rounded history and social studies curriculum that is being presented by a group of concerned parents. I have been concerned that current textbook seems outdated and doesn't support the current ways in which we teach our children about their community and the world around them. Please consider supplemental materials for each grade level by the start of next school year and current texts that have been published and updated recently.
We're on the next section topic concerned with school requirements. This comment is from Maurice Mandell. I raised an issue last November with a cloud campus PE instructor by conferring with the teacher, emailing the principal and by emailing Mr. Bauermeister after he had contacted me on a prior similar occasion and said that waiting six weeks for a response was unacceptable. The issue was that after the assignment was completed, the instructor evaluated the activity log based on criteria not previously designated or requested. In other words, the standard was changed after the assignment was completed. This is a great concern. Students cannot excel when the instruction changes the requirements after the assignment or tests are complete. To date and despite emailing reminders, I have not received any further response from Mr. Shaka or Mr. Bauermeister about this topic. The quarter slash semester has now closed. This is unacceptable.
This next comment is from Martha O'Meara. I'm hoping that putting public comments on non agenda items at the end of the meeting is a clerical clerical error. I realize that sometimes there's a large number of public comments, but those are the people you represent. Start the new year right and return all comments to the beginning of your meetings.
Okay, we'll move on to informal reports. Superintendent Lee Sung, would you like to say anything else?
Actually, I would. First of all, I do want to make a comment and provide just a little bit of information on some of the public comments related to the social studies curriculum. And I this is not agendized, so we can't go deep in this, but I would like Mr. Drake to come up and just just share a little bit about the work we have done with the social studies curriculum here in the district. Mr. Drake?
Yes, thank you Superintendent Lee Sung. So with history and social studies, as in any of our content areas areas, you know that the content, the curriculum and the frameworks are all driven by state guidelines, state standards and state frameworks. So we're we're teaching based off of those. You will also recall that I believe last spring you all approved new textbook adoptions for our seventh through 12th grade history, social studies classes. Those adoptions were state approved prior to coming and going through our process, which does include making sure that there's representation of of different peoples and times. And and of course, our history, social studies teachers are also given the opportunity to supplement those. We do recognize and had plans that have been postponed due to the pandemic that we need to update our K six materials. And we do plan to do that as soon as, you know, we are in a in a better state to go through our process to analyze those materials.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Drake. Okay, and I gave most of my report earlier, but I do want to make just two statements here. First of all, I want to thank Bob Cuba, myself, because I know the work that he had done behind the scenes to make all of this technology work. So Bob, thank you very much. I know you're back in the booth, not only preparing, but you're also pulling switches and levers and and doing a lot of amazing things back there. I also don't enough recognize Rosie Meskow, who's over here doing her job. And I don't know if you realize she is multitasking.
That's amazing.
To the highest level here and just does amazing work and takes care of all the details for all of us to make sure our meeting goes very smoothly. So Rosie, on behalf of all of us, I can say thank you for your work there. Okay. And and the last thing is, as we approach informal reports, I just want to say to staff to keep it brief because we do plan to adjourn back to closed session at the end of the open session. So if you have comments, by all means, please share if you don't and it's not urgent. Feel free that you can pass this this time, this time.
So I'm just going to go around the room and we will start with Assistant Superintendent Good place to start. Assistant Superintendent Leona Olson. Tim, no report. Did you scare them? Jeff Trader, no report. Mr. Drake? Mr. Dr. Bauermeister? Dr. Sir? Wow.
That's a theme.
Do we have any board member reports?
I had a couple things. I had our we had our first meeting with the Coastline ROP on December 16th. It was exciting to see the work that they're doing and that Newport Mesa has directly contributed to. So that was a nice moment. They have their accreditation typically it was planned for the spring, but it's been postponed to April of 2022. So I would have been giving you a report on how that Coastline ROP accreditation went, but probably next year you'll get that from me. And then just wanted to remind board members, because I almost forgot that we've got our budget review, governor's budget review on Friday with the schools for sound finance, which is one of, I think, the most important meetings for me every year because they do a really good job of talking about how basic aid districts like ours fit into the governor's budget.
Thank you. Anyone else? Trustee Crane?
Yeah, I wanted just to thank all those who wrote in to the district and gave us your comments because I know it takes a lot of time and and effort and, you know, we need to hear from you. So I and I know we cannot read all of them in public, but we are reading them privately and listening. So I would like to thank our constituents for, you know, giving us feedbacks. Thank you. I also want to thank, gosh, our district staff, our teachers, our nurses, our healthcare workers and just our cabinet. You it's we're not we're very singular times right now, and I know that many of us are sacrificing a lot of our time, our personal time. So I again want to acknowledge our amazing district staff from the school sites all the way to the district office. And let's see, onboarding has been wonderful. It's been the staff has been welcoming and accommodating. We basically are the new trustees hit the ground running pretty much, and we've made a lot of important decisions, ones that are challenging, but we are thoughtful in our process. So coming up is our I'm one of the liaisons for the Newport Mesa Foundation. So looking forward for our meeting on Thursday with trustee Anderson and trustee Wigan. We're representatives and so we look forward to meeting our Newport Mesa Foundation members. Thank you.
Anybody else? Trustee Anderson?
Yeah, I just wanted to start off. I'm I'm sure people might be aware, but on January 18th, next Monday, is Martin Luther King Junior Day, and it's actually a national day of service. So it would be amazing. There's actually a website for for this specific time serving in a time of COVID. So there's resources and ideas. It's nationalservice.org and it's slash serve our community. And there are also resources on the city of Costa Mesa website, so students or anyone in our community can serve. I think particularly as a result of some of the things, you know, that we've seen in our country, one of the quotes that for me is really important and is why I even thought about being on a school board is from Martin Luther King, everybody can be great because anyone can serve. You don't have to have a college degree to serve. You don't have to have you don't have to make your subject and your verb agree. You only need a heart full of grace and generated by love. Life's most persistent and urgent question is, what are you doing to serve others? So I would love if we can share particularly with our principals, that is an option for students to do next Monday. And then I also just wanted to know a little bit more about the Human Relations Task Force. There was a subcommittee that was for curriculum. And so I was wondering, I would like to get an update on how their discussions have been We get an update on that?
We can provide an update to the entire board this week, at the end of this week.
That would be great. As I think, as several people mentioned in their public comments, it often talks about diversity and inclusion and also nationally, you know, it's DEI, it's diversity, equity and inclusion. And I think that a lot of great work started, you know, over a year ago, but I would like to see that continue and really have some practical steps for us to be able to implement things for next fall. And I also would like an update on if and when and the timeline for hiring a curriculum director coordinator. My understanding that that is an open position currently or we are in need of one. And I think that's really important as we're looking into social studies curriculum. And then my last thing is I would love, I just wanted to say thank you for the postings for the school facilitators and today for additional school nurses. I think those are really important in this time, so thank you for doing that.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes, we are, I we're all so excited to hear about this vaccine and I was attending some PTA meetings this week and they definitely said volunteers, let us know. So if there is some way that we can try to, as we're rolling out vaccines, try to see how we can mobilize some of our great parent groups or any other kind of volunteer groups to help with that rollout of vaccine. I think we're all eager after seeing that video in the beginning to get back to that type of school again. So let us know how we can help. We'll be here.
Trustee Solu?
Oh, sure. Thank you. And I just wanted to commend the team under Dr. Diego Stino. I had the opportunity to attend the Mental Health Task Force meeting last week. And I just want to let all the parents out there know that there is some phenomenal work going on regarding mental health in the district that as an outsider parent, I had no idea. And there are some diamonds working in that department. And I'm hoping that in the next year, we'll hear more and more of the great work that they're doing and parent resources will get spread, not only for the kids, but also for the parents in terms of mindfulness and mental health support. So that was really exciting to see that we have so much going on there. And I just want to echo what trustee Anderson was saying about the Human Relations Task Force, having been a parent member of that for for a while, I got to see that it was heavily driven by the more upper grades, the high school parents. So I'm really excited tonight to see so many elementary parents speak up about the need for curricular curriculum reform to get these diversity, equity and inclusion issues out and talked about from kindergarten on. So I'm really looking forward to that update and how we can get more of the elementary parents involved in that process because in the past it was heavily secondary driven. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, before we adjourn, I also just want to take the time to thank everyone, not only Superintendent Lee Sung and Cabinet and directors and everybody who are here, but our teachers, our staff, everybody who's working so hard. We're sitting up here, but it's everybody else who is doing all the work and we so appreciate it. It is not an easy time for anybody. And I think we've all we appreciate the comments from the public. As anyone can see in listening to them, you'll hear one comment with one point of view, one comment with the opposite point of view, and we listen to that all the time. So none of these decisions are easy and we've got to keep that in mind. We're looking at the overall picture of keeping everyone safe, but making sure we give a good education to all our children. And we have it's a it's a tough balancing act. And as I've said to people, I know that I can't make anybody happy. That's the only truth I know because even if you agree with one point that we're making, you're probably not happy about something else. But hopefully we'll get through this. We're getting to the point where we're going to have a vaccine and it would be great to be back to some type of normalcy in the not too distant future. So with that.
Just one quick comment. Parents, if you really want us to get back to full time, please mask up, stay safe, stay home, social distance. When we get those numbers down, it's way easier for our board to get on board with being at school all day. So parents, help us out.
Yes, important point. And if you're sick or you have any symptoms or you're near someone who's sick, please stay home. Do not come to school and go the 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 distance learning route for that time. Anyway, we will be adjourning our meeting, but going back into closed session and there will be no report out from that. So good night and thank you.